It's good to see everyone this Tuesday morning. Ladies and gentlemen, we're now in the hands of our capable city clerk, Ms. Lisa Carroll.
This is the pre-meeting of the Mobile City Council, Tuesday, March the 25th. We have approval of minutes from March 18th.
Any issues in the one? Okay.
Appeals, we have requests for waiver of the noise ordinance on May the 31st at the Brad Mitchell Mansion from 7:00 PM until 11:00 PM. April the 5th from 6:00 PM until 10:00 PM on North Monterey Street. April 11th from 5:00 PM until 9:30 on Cantide Street. April 13th, 8:00 AM until 12:00 PM on St. Francis Street. May the, April 11th, May 9th, and June 13th on North Jackson Street from 5:00 PM until 9:00 PM. May 15th from 10:00 AM until 1:00 PM in, at Arlington Park. April the 12th, Melavanna Park, 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM. April 12th, 7:00 AM to 2:00 PM in Langin Park.
I want to change that one. Generally, I think on these, the 7:00 AM timeline, it's just when they are going in to set up. It's not really when they need all the amplified sound. So let's change that to 8:30 and just let them know.
April 13th in Langin Park from 2:00 PM until 5:00 PM. April 14th in Langin Park from 7:00 PM until 8:30.
Any issues in the one? Okay.
Public hearings today as a public hearing to consider the vacation of City Right-of-Way located on Farnell Lane.
Mr. President.
Yeah, Ms. Davis.
I'd like to ask Mr. Amberger to come to the podium and just explain what this is.
Farnell Lane.
Just, just tell them about the, what it is, the swamp out there so we can have better access to the ditch.
Good morning. This is a site located on Highway 90, right there by some of the old, the car dealerships. And what was the name of the restaurant that was there? The Royal Night. The Royal Night. And there's an old, there's an old right-of-way that's in between to exist the Royal Night Building and a warehouse building. The warehouse owner has bought the Royal Night Building and wants to basically combine all of that property. In doing so, what they, what they, what they're asking is that we vacate the strip of real estate that's in between them. Because it doesn't look like a road, but it, but it is, it is a right-of-way. And they're going to then grant us access to a large ditch that's back there, parallel to the service road. So we end up in a much, much better situation from accessing our infrastructure. They end up in a much better situation in that they're able to have function, you know, to the, to this warehouse. That, I think it's an air conditioning site. So it's, 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 it's a win-win for everybody, in my opinion.
Yeah, thank you. We have had issues with people on the north side of the ditch in our ability to get in and maintain the ditch. And so this will, this will allow us better, as Nick said, better access to maintain the ditch and make it better for the people on the north side. Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
So I saw the public hearing to consider a vacation fee for the City Right-of-Way on Farnell Lane. Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, Bryant Cox, regarding citation for having a storage container on his property.
Okay, Vice President.
No, I just have a question on this. We, people ask us all the time, you know, why a container like this can be on a property or even a dumpster be on a property. So I think those are some questions that we need to have answered. Thank you, Shayla.
Good morning. So the zoning ordinance allows a temporary storage unit, like a Conex box, pod, in a residential property, but for no more than 60 days. So after that, they're not allowed. This one came to us, it was a 3-1-1 complaint.
Any idea how long this gentleman has had?
So the 3-1-1 complaint was filed on 9/20 of 2024. The, a notice of violation was given on 9/30, 2024. A second notice of violation was given on 12/6, 2024. And then an MOT was issued on 3/5, 2025. So the environmental court hearing is for April. So since that time, the storage unit hasn't moved.
Been a long time in the process. So this is a storage unit, it's not a dumpster.
No.
When people are doing construction, a lot of times they have the big dumpsters out.
Yeah.
But that's a totally different thing.
Right. So typically, we would look to see what type of, if they have appropriate permits, that kind of thing, to even allow that. But there is a timestamp for all of these facilities. Now, I believe this gentleman is doing some work within the area. But he, he'd been communicated with in March to explain our process and what was allowed and what was not allowed.
Another question from the council. Thank you, Ms. Davis.
Ordinance is held over 6400A, consider rezoning property located at 1400 Dolphin Island Parkway, 2007 Webb Avenue, 2006 McVeigh Drive, north from R1 to B2. 64009, consider rezoning property located at the southeast corner of Commerce Boulevard East and Commerce Boulevard South, extending to the southwest corner of Commerce Boulevard South and Commerce Boulevard West from B5 and I2 to R1. 64010 and 011 are considering proposed modifications of previously approved planning approval for a property located at 817 Downtown Boulevard and 3725 Airport Boulevard and for modification of a previously approved plan unit development on same locations. 64012 and 013 are considering modifications of a previously approved planning approval for property located at 951 Downtown Boulevard and 3655 Marion Beckham Drive and also for a previously approved plan unit development at the same locations. CIP resolutions held over 01488, authorize agreement with Alabama Department of Transportation for upgrades to detection system at traffic signals.
Mr. President. Yeah, Ms. Davis.
Is Ms. White here today, Jennifer? Could you give us an update on the Airport Boulevard synchronization and the Dolphin Street synchronization?
Dolphin Street between Sage and the hospital.
Right.
We have gone back in with the other project that is supposed to bid probably in July. And we had that agreement with Aldot altered for the Dolphin Street project where we're buying the equipment. So you should see those POs start hitting the council agendas because it'll be a great deal of money, a couple hundred thousand dollars in equipment purchases. So we're purchasing all the equipment for the project, cabinets, controllers and things in the detection. And then it'll go in with that project to be installed. It has currently been retimed and has new control, uh, controllers and MMUs in there. But there's still, there, there have been some detection repairs, but not a complete. And the fiber, we're using cell modems right now for communication, but that'll go to fiber at the project. And we'll pull those modems out of the system.
Yeah, two things. First thing is, the, the lights, the light, the lights at Dolphin Street and 65 appear to bust every now, I mean, just, I, I've, I've go up, sometimes I'll go up there and on the, on the east side, where you come up the ramp, it'll be blinking red or yellow, depending on where you are. And that, and that's happened on a couple of occasions.
It's on flash.
When I've been going through, yes, on flash, when it shouldn't be on flash. And so I, I assume that that's because the equipment is...
There's been some sort of malfunction either with, we've had quite a few lately of power surge issues out in that area that causes, when we have intermittent power problems, the signal goes on flash out of default if it doesn't have a steady signal of power. It also could have been it just, through the MMU, it picked up a fault that had to be corrected and something had to be repaired. Because those cabinets are still old. The material inside may be new, but the cabinets that all the wiring runs through is still old. And that'll be changed out with the project to new cabinets.
When that happens, when it goes to flashing, when it shouldn't be going to flashing, is someone in the city notified about that?
Yes, yes.
And on the automat, there's some kind of automatic notification?
Through that Semtrac system, we do get notification of flashing signals when they're not programmed to flash.
And so the, to go back to the project itself, the synchronization, that's, that's what I'm calling it, but you know what I'm talking about. The synchronization and the redo, the reconstruction of Dolphin Street, that's all one project now.
Yes.
And I, I think what I heard you say is it'll be put out to bid in July-ish?
Around that time, I think. I think there's still some right-of-way issues being worked out.
Yeah, we've got like one more piece of real estate to resolve. And in recent weeks, y'all have seen a couple of real estate transactions that's come through where we've acquired pieces and we've got one left to go. And then that should, that'll free up Aldot to provide us their construction review comments. So right now, we're anticipating, you know, July for, for letting. And it'll be like a McGregor project where Aldot will let and own the construction contract and we will, we will, we will own the inspection contracts part of it. So it'll be just like the way the South McGregor project is being executed. So it'll get let through them, probably a couple of months before you start seeing physical construction after their letting. But that's, that's how, that's how.
But it shouldn't take as long as McGregor.
No, 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 no.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not complaining, I mean, it's been a long time.
Everybody's gonna love how it's been. When you hear some people complaining about it, when you, when the finished product is, I think everybody's gonna be pretty impressed with what it's there. No, this, the, the one on Dolphin Street, it's really just topside work. I mean, it's nowhere, nowhere near as invasive as a South McGregor, which had a 20-inch gas main, a bridge, all the water lines, all the sewer lines. So different, totally different, different.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Scale of project.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. President.
Yeah, Mr. Penn.
Airport Boulevard is getting ready to bid right now. We just got approval from Aldot. It's already been, it already has new controllers and fiber in it. So it, it is, it has been running new timing. But this will go through, change out the cabinets and put in new detection and put, put in new equipment besides that. So I think we'll even be able to see some of the intersections. We're looking at doing the flashing yellow arrows. So we'll be able to add those to a couple of the intersections, I think.
And that's Azalea Road to Schillinger?
That is, it's really University to Cody.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Penn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. White. So this past weekend, I got a lot of phone calls regarding the lighting, the lights on Spring Hill and Moffett, as well as going down Moffett. I wonder, it's the timing has changed. So I, I went to the particular location and, I mean, like, it, it's changing so fast.
Yeah, and, and, and now Moffett is being controlled by Aldot and they are watching it constantly and they, they may tweak it every day, we don't know. But everything in the city, whether it's Aldot's or the cities or even the counties, was completely retimed and wrapped up around December of this year. So there are new timing citywide. And some of those timing changes include changes to, like, the left turns. So you may not, like, during the lighter times of the day, that left turn signal comes at the end of the signal. It's a lagging left rather than a leading left. And so that'll change throughout the day. Some parts of the day during peak hours, it may be a leading left to clear it out and get more people in it. But in the eve, in the evening or midday, it could be a lagging left. So those things are changing during the day of how the intersection operates to efficiently use the time.
Yeah, is there any way that we can request someone to come and investigate? Because like that Saturday, traffic was backed up and people started running, like, I'm, I went to that and they started running the red light could potentially, of course, create accidents.
Yeah, we can look at it.
Okay.
We, we, we have those, in fact, we just got the agreement back yesterday that y'all had passed off and sent to Montgomery. We just got it back from Montgomery where we have those contracts with both AECom and Kimbley Horn. And that's what those contracts are for is when there's kind of changes that need to be made intermittently during the year. Because you never know, like, our patterns change constantly sometimes, especially when we have construction, we push traffic toward other streets. But that allows us to let them go out and tweak the entire corridor for us. And so that's what those contracts were for, that, that we got through the MPO.
Okay.
Yes, all those, a lot of those changes are, are going on.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Our consultants are also logged into this remotely. They do come and do a lot of stuff in field because you need to do field adjustment after you do some major changes that you actually need to go out and do field obs, observation and do little small changes. But they do a lot of the stuff just straight from the office.
Okay, so if, just say if a resident sees these type of issues and then, who should they call?
311.
And just, they just need to call 311.
Yeah, because we're taking those 311 complaints and then assigning them to our consultants that they fall under their, because we got the city divided into kind of halves. And this consultant does these roads, you know, the other one does this one. So we are forwarding them those, that information every day. And now we have them, an account under our 311 system to assign them a work order.
Okay. And then, um...
Same with DOT, we have them and they're cut in the same situation.
But then in Corey's, our customer Penn's instance this weekend, 311 is closed and non-emergency would be the, would be the...
Yeah, or to put it in, I think you can, you can always put it in on the website 24/7. Yeah, so if you go on the app or the website, you can always put it in. And we'll get it first thing Monday morning. Okay, and email also.
Yeah, and just to follow up on, on Josh, because a lot of times, these things happen on the weekends. And if it's happening Saturday morning, it sounds like it won't be until Monday.
Now, if it's, now if it's an emergency, the non-emergency number will call us out.
So the police, non-emergency.
Or something like that, or, or it's not changing at all, is to call the non-emergency number and go ahead and get them to get our own call person out there. Because we'll go out there and make adjustments.
Okay.
All right, anyone else? All right, thank you, Ms. White. Madam Clerk.
Resolutions held over 01439, authorize intergovernmental agreement with Mobile County Commission for the Mobile Arena Project.
Mr. President. I was just gonna say, I guess, obviously with the news yesterday at 4:35, every news cycle, does, do we need to substitute something here to make the change to the, accept the 7.5 versus the 10?
The amount. Yeah.
Because I think it was a different amount, different payment terms, I guess.
Different schedule, different amount. And so what we're waiting on is the approved agreement coming back to us and then we'll put that up and substitute.
So we just table this, or do you want us to hold this over?
Are you gonna have it before 10:30 on the amount?
Probably not. So Teresa, have you talked to, yeah, we're, we're not going to be able to have it, but today. So you may just want to hold it over and then we can substitute the, the agreement that the county commission passed.
Think layover a week.
Yeah.
Yes.
Just table this one?
No, lay it over.
Lay it over, okay.
Layover for a week.
Yeah, just lay it over, okay.
001490, authorize agreement to accept right-of-way deed when prepared for property located at 3661 Dolphin Street, plus closing costs. 08493, approved purchase order to Gulf Coast Truck and Equipment for Fire Pumper Truck Engine Replacement. 6497, authorize settlement agreement and release of claims. Ordinance is being introduced, 34014, ordinance to levy taxes for tax year beginning October 1 and for successive years on all real and personal property and tangibles located within certain areas within the corporate limits of the city of Mobile and to accept for such taxes other areas within the corporate limits of the city of Mobile. This is the at the law. Consent resolutions being introduced, 34, 03499, appoint Tyrethena? Tyrethena?
Pharrell.
Okay, Tyrethena. Okay, Tyrethena Pharrell to the Board of Adjustment. 37500, recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a retail beer table wine off-premises only license to Food Champs on Dolphin Island Parkway. 6501, 502, and 503 are determining appropriations to Africa Town Community Development Corporation, Kingdom Covenant Connections, Penelope House serve a public purpose and approving payment. Resolutions being introduced, 01504, authorize agreement with Distinguished Young Women Foundation, about 50,000. 01505, authorize agreement with Mobile Air Chamber of Commerce Foundation, 200,000.
Mr. President. This Chamber of Commerce allocation by way of a performance contract was not in our budget.
There's, half of it is. Half of it's been approved. There's an actual, another $100,000 that we're asking to add to the Mogo program as a backup alternative to wave transit for medical transportation. And we'd actually asked that y'all take that up on consent just because of the uncertainty of the labor negotiations with the union and the management trans, at the transit. So really, you're adding $100,000 to the performance contract at the chamber.
Okay.
Mr. Reynolds, Mr. Woods, and Vice President. I mean, Mr. Penn, Mr. Woods, Vice President, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President. So Chief, with this, the extra $100,000, I know in the past, that particular program only stayed in a certain area.
I, I don't think it's restricted. The, the transportation was for workforce, but, but it's not restricted to any, I don't think it's restricted to any particular area.
When it was presented to us, it said it was restricted to a certain geographic location. Would they be able to now go outside that and utilize the city limits?
There's, there's a discussion of expanding that. The, the $100,000 gives us a couple of opportunities. One, the current Mogo.
Come on up here.
So... Mogo, as we know it, their contract with the chamber expires on March 31. So the extra $100,000 is to extend Mogo through June 30 and give them the ability to also expand Mogo into, into some larger areas of service. That's the discussion that we have for them now. That provides us the ability to negotiate with, with Via Transportation and the chamber to continue that program beyond June 30 of this year. The discussion has been that we would attempt to kind of reduce the reliance on wave and increase our ability to improve services through Mogo through a more micro service. That's the plan for this $100,000. That will allow us to do that through the summer until we can get those contracts in place.
So the $100,000 right now is not necessary for the services of the ones who need it from going to the doctor office?
So currently...
And just to, to approve it, to extend the contract right now?
That is correct. Now, there, there are two parts to that conversation. We had a conversation with Via Transportation and the chamber this morning at 8 o'clock to discuss what the next 90 days looks like. They are agreeable to work to expand the services via transportation is. We have two luxuries there. The first is, we don't have to go through an RFP process to do that because we will be funding the chamber, we will be funding Via Transportation and Mogo first. Secondly, they said if they needed to expand into a broader service that were, would include medical services, that they could have that up and running in roughly three weeks. So we are looking to expand those services as quickly as we can, given some information we've had for transit over the last 48 hours and grow it into a longer-term solution after June 30.
Okay, and then have they also presented any numbers of how much they could expand, like, the service?
No, sir, we, we just, this is infancy conversation. We literally just had the conversation at 8 o'clock this morning to get us through these 90 days.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Woods.
Scott, as, so, and forgive me for this, I'm not well-versed in the Mogo. Does Via Transportation, do they operate Mogo or is it two separate entities, I guess?
Via operates Mogo, they are contracted through the chamber.
Okay, and then, I guess, just over, obviously, kind of called everybody by surprise yesterday. I guess, kind of looking, looking forward on, and again, because Mogo is, I mean, what, 12 months, I guess, give or take, maybe? Or two years in, in, in operation? Is there a way that we might, could ask for some ridership information from, from that?
Certainly, they requested that this morning and they would like to, Laura O'Connor and her group, along with Via, would like to make a presentation to all of you to understand what that ridership would look like, what those needs would be, the ability to schedule those, manage those, and increase that service.
Because, again, kind of just looking at, at Mogo and, and Via Transportation, comparing, and again, I know it's not apples to oranges exactly, but, to me, it just seems like the, the Mogo, I mean, the ridership there is, is pretty substantial compared to, to other forms of public transportation. So I would be curious to see kind of what their, what that looks like.
Certainly, and the chamber suggested this morning that we engage the health providers also. They've mentioned specifically USA Health this morning. So it will be a broad discussion as we get into the expansion of those services.
Got you, I think it's a great time to kind of look at what our public transportation system as a whole looks like. Thank you.
Vice President and Councilman Davis.
Appreciate that. Sorry, I'm kind of going backwards on this, but just wasn't exactly sure what it was we were doing here with giving the extra money to the chamber and their foundation. I'm just not familiar with Mogo or the Via Transit or any of those sorts of things. You know, it sounds like most everybody is, so I'm kind of going backwards. But could you just explain so that everybody understands, me in particular, I guess, what this agreement is and why we're doing it, what Mogo is and the Via, and, and why we're giving $100,000 more to the Chamber Foundation at this point?
Certainly, so Via is a, is a pretty large national company that specializes really in municipal transportation. They run bus, bus service, transit service for several locations across the country. They also run smaller micro service, such as the Mogo, which is in our form today, really is a, a ride-share for, to and from work.
So Mogo is already operating in Mobile?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
Okay, I guess I have not seen the buses with Mogo written on them. Vans, whatever they are.
So they, they are smaller, they are typically unmarked or smaller ride-share. And they're really central today to workforce transportation, to and from places of work, Airbus, places such as that. And you would call your ride, your ride-share with two or three people.
Thing that we did, an agreement with Baldwin and Mobile, taking people across the, the bay. I remember there was some sort of a ride-share program that the chamber did.
Yes, it's my understanding this is specific to, to our local, to our local side of the, of the bay for what we have funded.
But it, but it goes citywide?
It does. The, that contract expires on March 31st. So March 31, Mogo would go away in the sense that we know it today. There has been some discussion about questions regarding wave transit, their ability to service smaller, smaller routes and medical services, medical transportation, doctor visits, in addition to the ride-share for work. What this $100,000 does is allow us to extend the existing contract from March 31 until June 30. The reason that date is important is because the city's wave transit contract expires on June 30 as well. So in looking at the June 30 date, what we wanted to do was mirror those dates so we could have a new spin-up date with whatever happens Mogo and its growth or expansion as we know it and correlate that date to whatever happens with wave transit. The secondary conversation of that has been to grow the smaller micro transit through Via Transportation or similar company. So we would reduce the larger transportation, the large buses that we have that are less than effective for what I think we would like them to be, and grow more effective, smaller unit transportation. That's where Via comes in. With the, with this $100,000, again, we don't have to bid anything or go through an RFP or RFQ. We would simply partner with the chamber, they have that in place. When we grow that, within the next 90 days, we would grow it through an RFP, RFQ and have Via Transportation be a part of, part of that discussion. And again, their requests have been to make a presentation to you, as has the chamber. Obviously, the information we've learned of wave transit in the last 48 hours is a bit bothersome. We want to make sure that we can address all of those needs as quickly as we can.
Yeah, I guess that would be the follow-up, given what we have heard in the last 48 hours. Is the Via program ready to take on some of those routes or the, the people who need the, the smaller transportation, getting to work, getting to the doctor that have been relying on, on wave transit?
They are, the conversations we had this morning, and again, we just literally had the meeting at 8 o'clock. They, they believe they can be up and running in three weeks maximum to be able to provide the smaller service for the, for the medical, the medical transportation. So that was our focus when we got off the call today. As soon as we leave the city council meeting and I get this feedback from you guys, we'll have a follow-up meeting this afternoon.
Councilman Davis.
I'm in, I'm in favor of taking this up today. I think we have a looming crisis before us, particularly with respect to the people that need the medical transportation. I do, I do commend and, and endorse, as Councilman Woods has suggested, a complete review of our public transportation system and how we might operate more effectively and efficiently. As I, as I mentioned a week or so ago, Councilman Richardson and Councilman Mananzi and I went to Montgomery and Birmingham and Huntsville and looked at their public transportation systems. And all I can tell you is... And all I can tell you is that you have to, Birmingham's different because it's a metro transportation system. But all I can tell you is that Huntsville, in our opinion, and not just me, it was the other two also, in our opinion, our public transportation system run at that time ran less efficiently than the Huntsville and Montgomery systems. So I think there's some ways we can serve the people that need to be served at a better, at a lower cost, and I commend that to you. But right now, we got a crisis we got to deal with, and I think it's important that these people that need medical transportation get it, uh, because if they don't, if we don't provide it, one of two things is going to happen. Either they're not going to get to where they need to get, or they're going to find some other way to do it, which is more costly to us. So I think, I think we need to proceed with it post haste. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Yeah, Mr. Woods.
Um, and I won't belabor this, um, uh, because last week, again, you know, we had, we had a discussion about, you know, the cost of transportation when it comes to being transported by ambulance and, and, um, you know, uh, I, I know the three-week timeframe is, is, is what we're, what we're kind of working on, but, um, if, if all possible, um, you know, even if it's a smaller as need, um, basis, I mean, I think that, uh, if, if it can come online, at least in a smaller function, the next three weeks before then, I mean, obviously, I think that's a priority, so.
Certainly. We'll, we'll make the effort. There are several discussions to be had there. And, and then last, I know, Mr. Park has, in specific to, um, your question, Councilman Reynolds, we don't believe there can be any budgetary impact on this. Obviously, we've budgeted for wave transit through the year. For our year is September thirty, but their contract expires on June thirty, so we know there's going to be a reduction in that. So while this is an increase of a hundred thousand dollars to the Chamber, we believe there'll be a decrease overall in what we fund the wave through the year, so we think this will be a negative budgetary impact for this allocation.
Just to follow up on what Councilman Wood said, it's going to take us three weeks to work something out, um, as far, if, if it's needed. The, um, Public Safety Director is already working on contingencies for people that have to have life-saving procedures in those three-week gap, and so we, we are working on that. And it would be a non-ambulance, just transportation, emergency transportation for life-saving procedures. Okay.
Mr. President.
Mr. Reynolds.
I, I, I would say I have, uh, not a complete understanding of how, uh, wave transit operates, their, their routes, their ridership, um, the efficacy of how we approach, um, public transportation altogether. Uh, it would be helpful if, uh, if I understood that a little bit better. Uh, and I don't know if that, uh, presentation or outlay of information is, should come directly from wave or if, if maybe someone with the administration who sort of oversees this contract, administrative services, or whatever can sort of outlay it all to us so that I can.
I'd suggest we have a separate meeting of the Public Services Committee or something like that to really kind of take a deep dive into public transportation. That would be my suggestion.
Yeah, and, and if there, if there's information that's already been gathered or that the city is in possession of, I'd love to be prepared for that meeting so we can have some, you know, positive outcome. Yeah, I'll take your five, ten years.
And to that point, if, if we, um, if we revisit this next week, um, obviously, um, three weeks is the, the timeframe to get rolled on this, but, um, you know, if we revisit this next week and possibly set up a Public Services Committee meeting, would that be fine with everybody? Okay.
Let's go ahead and pass this.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, let's pass this.
So everybody's good with waiving the rules on this one? Voting on it? Okay.
I, I'm gonna say, um, ask Councilman Woods to, uh, go ahead and, uh, let's try to see by scheduling, and it's gonna have to be more than one, more than one meeting, uh, uh, committee meeting, um, dealing with these, uh, issues, especially digging and doing, knowing exactly what the wave is doing. And even what Councilman had, Dave has stated, um, Richardson, Art Manzi is still here to, not here today, we have a brand-new council. But, uh, to the point where Councilman Dave was stating about that Birmingham's a whole different animal, I went to, uh, the Majesty Classic, uh, back in October, and, uh, at the concert, the, uh, manager of the Air Transportation Department stood up boldly and was proud to, you know, say exactly what they are doing in Birmingham, that they was even building affordable houses. And, uh, it shocked me because I never thought that their transportation, um, department would be building affordable housing and everything. So every time I hear something about the wave, it's always something negative unless we buy us some new buses, but never really hear too much positive really coming from them or anything. So I do agree with Councilman Woods that we need to go ahead and, um, jump on top of that maybe next Tuesday, but also would like to know more about, uh, the transportation series, especially in Birmingham and Huntsville and also Montgomery. So it's Councilman Woods that we probably can just work with Councilman Dave, and I believe Councilman Dave has also served on the committee along with Core Penn. And, uh, let's go ahead and get a date and let's look deeper into the waves and also this other group that want to, uh, do this presentation.
Mr. President. Uh, Mr. Reynolds.
If we could make a, a great effort, Mr. Chairman, uh, to avoid letting the discussion get into all these sort of labor issues and employment issues that exist between wave and, and their employers, if we could keep it narrowly focused on us operating or having good public transportation and understanding.
I agree with that too, because with the contract coming up, we don't know who the new, um, management team may be, so we just need to look strictly at the issues of transportation, not on who may or may not be, you know, managing the system in the future.
Okay. All right. Madam Clerk.
Zero-three, five oh six, appoint William Ray to the Mobile Housing Authority Board.
Uh, Mr., uh.
Mr. President, but this is just an appointment to fill a vacancy. It should have been under consent instead of a first read, if we could take that one up.
Zero-eight, five oh seven, approve purchase order to CDW Government for networking switches, twenty thousand, four hundred sixty-eight dollars. Zero-eight, five oh eight, approve purchase order to Howard Industries for wireless microphones and accessories, twenty-six thousand, seven hundred nineteen dollars and five cents. Zero-eight, five oh nine, per, approve purchase order to Long Lewis Ford Shoals for Ford Bronco SUVs for municipal enforcement, fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred ninety-one dollars. Zero-eight, five-ten, approve purchase order to Mike Huffman, Hoffman, uh, Equipment for replacement fuel pumps for municipal garage, twenty-five thousand, seventy-one dollars. Zero-eight, five-eleven, approve purchase order to North American Fire Equipment for fire hose, sixty-six thousand, five hundred twenty-five dollars. Zero-eight, five-twelve, approve purchase order to Zintec for annual renewal of FM Live software for municipal garage, sixteen thousand, nine hundred eighty-eight dollars. Zero-nine, five thirteen, transfer funds for Project SDT, oh eight, to project, grant project, GST, P-O-L-D-S-H for Grant Match, one hundred twenty-five thousand. Twenty-one, five fourteen, authorized grant, and five fif, yeah, I'm sorry, twenty-one, five fourteen, authorized grant with P.O.R. Russell for Spring Hill Court retaining wall improvements, three hundred forty-nine thousand, five hundred fifteen thousand, forty-nine cents.
Mr. President.
Vice President.
This is a contract. Uh, this is something that is a long time coming, that I have been working with residents along with Nick and, and his team to make happen. We have a public safety issue on Spring Hill Avenue where some walls, um, that were created a long, long time ago are creating line-of-side issues, and, um, we have finally gotten to a point where we can purchase a little bit of property over there and make the necessary, uh, renovations in order to improve that. So, um, the residents will be happy to see this. We are doing our very best to get this work done during spring break. As you can guess, Spring Hill Avenue is very busy. So we are attempting to get this done during spring break. Y'all told me spring break. No, 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 not for those schools over there. We found out that spring break was April twentieth. Where's Carleen? Yeah, she's nodding her head. This needs to be done.
It's a fairly complicated effort in that we've got to close a lane of Spring Hill Avenue down to remove the existing wall, remove some soil, and push the wall back. So we are working with the contractor, uh, so that he understands this is a tear the band-aid off very quickly effort. If we can execute it during spring break, which I guess is one of the, one of the, the conversations and train of thoughts, it's going to be so that that big disruptive part, which will be a lane closure, you know, heading, heading, uh, I guess, east toward sixty-five will be short and/or be after hours and/or be on the weekends. Uh, if we don't have a good, good feeling from him that he can execute that in, in our, in our pre-construction meetings, we will push him back possibly, possibly to the summer. Uh, it's a, it's a, there's not, there's no real estate to work with, and so doing as quickly as it can, but it has been out there since the early seventies, so, um.
I understand that. We've been working on this for almost two years now, so when I get the phone calls, I'm just going to direct them to you, Nick Amberger.
Please, please, please do. Happy, happy to take them.
Or the mayor, anyway, yeah. Yeah, when the residents start calling me wondering how come we're not doing it during spring break like we've been promising, so. Happy to send them upstairs.
Twenty-one, five fifteen, and five sixteen are authorizing contracts with, um, James B. Donahue for the History Museum of Mobile HVAC Upgrades, three hundred and thirty-five thousand, and for artillery replacement, three hundred and fifty thousand.
Take any of these?
Um, we're not finished.
Not finished.
Well, I was just, well, I was just going to go back to.
It's, uh, five oh seven, five oh eight, five-ten, five-twelve.
Yeah. Five-ten, five-twelve.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, five oh six.
And then five oh five.
Five oh five, five oh six, five oh seven.
Five oh eight.
Eight.
Ten, and twelve.
Ten, twelve. Yeah. With the rest being laid over.
Yeah.
If everybody agrees.
No objection.
Forty-seven, five seventeen, and five eighteen, the vacation on Farnell Lane. Call for public hearings, forty-one, five nineteen, call for public hearing to consider the application of Juanita Moss for certificate of public convenience and necessity to operate a limousine service scheduled April the eighth. Forty-one, five twenty, call for public hearing to consider the application of Shanika Matthews Hobday for certificate of public convenience and necessity to operate a sedan service scheduled April the eighth. Announcements.
Uh, Council.
Mr. President.
Uh, Penn.
No, thank you, Mr. President. Just had a couple, um, things, um, for the administration. We've been having some issues, um, especially one on, uh, Ryan's, um, Avenue with a sinkhole. Um, we've reported this multiple times. Um, I know it's dealing with malls. Um, what, what can we do to speed this process up? I mean, we, we see this issue all through our city, and we saying it's a Mars issue. What is the, how long we going to be able to, um, just allow it to sit there and just create these problems for the residents? Is there anything that we can do to push these things forward, to give them a timeframe that they need to fix this stuff?
Yeah. So, so I would recommend you reach out to your, your board, board appointees that you appoint. Uh, when y'all give the calls to us, however we receive them, we work back with the nuts and bolts folks that, that we deal with. Uh, that, that one there, I remember, it came in, you know, probably a couple of months ago. Uh, we forward it to them, we send them the pictures, we, we, we try to verify that it's not ours. Uh, so, I mean, you can help us by, by asking your board representative to talk to, uh, their director. I mean, we can't, I mean, I can't make those guys go out and do the, do the, do the work. I mean, I can't force them to go out there and do it. Uh, most of the time, they act like that's pretty, pretty good with us, and we're in a pretty good rhythm, but I can't set, the city can't set their, their, their priorities. Y'all can help with that, you know, in, in elevating it, uh, into the board members and their, and their director.
Okay. All right. What Joel just told me, he gonna, you know, help me out, so, um, I'm gonna give him a call after this. But I, I, I just think that is, it's sad that our residents just have to deal with that. Some of it, like, you can see, I mean, it was one I was, that's near Bishop's Day, I can look down and see a hole. I mean, if a key falls, and it just, to me, that we should be able to create some type of timeframe to say, like, you need to fix this issue, but I guess, I'm not a lawyer, so I can't. Joel, you're a lawyer, you might tell. But, you know, we, we just need to be able to, to just speed this process up, um, to get done. And I know you're doing the best you can, Nick.
Well, and let me ask this, let me add this to it. Mars has a dispatch number, just like our three-one-one system where they take calls. So if, if, if y'all or any of your constituents call us through our three-one-one system, all we can do is go back through theirs. So I would hand out to any of your constituency, Mars dispatch number, two-five-one, six-nine-four, three-one-six-five, and that gets it directly to the people that have to deal with. And I think probably if they go into their records and see that that call, that there's been a call or complaint about a, about a, about a location, you know, repeatedly, uh, you know, it, it should help to motivate them to get out there and make it, make it more of a priority. I will say, in a little bit of defense of them, their infrastructure, you know, east of sixty-five is just as old of our, as ours. So it's old, it's challenged, there's issues. I mean, you know, when it gets cold, you see the water bubbling up everywhere, it's because their lines are breaking. Uh, but, yeah, you just got to reach back out and, and utilize their process, and I would engage their, their, their dispatch, uh, program. I, I call it pretty routinely myself, when I see street cuts that have failed and aren't adequate, I call it in there. And so I know if I've called two or three times and they haven't addressed it, you know, I, I elevate it to their director and say, look, I mean, we called two or three times, you still haven't, haven't addressed it, so put pressure on them, so.
All right, well, I'd definitely do that. I thank you for sharing. I think that is something that we should do. I mean, we, we do it to you all, you know, if it's an issue, I'd say, call Nick or call the mayor, I can't do anything about it. So maybe we should do a PSAM, um, about Mars and, and do some videos because, yeah, because it's seriously, it's, it's just, to me, is, is creating some problems and, and at least answer and say, what's going on? Like, a timeframe, you all do that and say, hey, this the issue, this the problem, it's going to take some time, at least give us that same thing. So, um, I don't mind doing a video and doing some, and put that number out, because I think we need to do something for our constituents. So thank you for sharing that, Nick.
Mr. President. Um, and just, uh, so, uh, Nick, with the curve, uh, the, the street cut and everything, um, you know, the process with the, the city council passed the, um, you know, the, the mand, mandate that, you know, the, the medallion has to be in there. So, so the street tag, um, so we, we do the initial, I mean, Mars comes in, a good example is, uh, Hillcrest Road. Um, Mars comes in, does a street cut, um, obviously, there's a temporary patch that's put there. Um, theoretically, in theory or in practice, it's supposed to be, what, sixty to ninety days, and then they, ninety days, and then they come back? Okay.
Yeah, tha, after they do the initial cut and it's a temporary patch, there, there's a ninety-day cure period. I will tell you, Mars, uh, is working and considering, considering buying some compaction testing equipment so that they can make more of a permanent patch when they, when they make those initial patches. But if you ever see those patches in the street, and if you've got a, you know, a green or a blue one, and that patch has failed, you would call that Mars dispatch number and say, look, there's a patch that, you know, that's whatever address that's in a failed condition, it needs attention. And I will say, they are pretty, pretty reasonably responsive when they get that because they know that can turn into a much greater claim for them if there, if there is in fact a sinkhole. So had pretty decent luck when I've, when I've done that myself.
I'd make a note of it, of what color the, the medallion is. I've actually got an ongoing list when people call me about, uh, cuts in the street that I've been keeping up with.
Blue, blue or green, blue is water, green is sewer, uh, yellow is gas, red would be Alabama Power, and those are, those are the general ones, yeah, that would, you generally